And we are now recording, Rob.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I see that we have a quorum of the board here, so I'm going to call the meeting of the Hollis School Board order on Wednesday, April 29. We will go ahead and I will call for agenda adjustments at this time.
Rob?
Yes.
You need to go by board member and just make sure that they they can hear you and why they're at home.
Okay, sure. So we'll go we'll go from from right across here on my screen here. So we have Brooke Arthur. Are you at home and alone right now?
Yes, I'm at home. I'm alone. I can hear you and I'm participating remotely by Zoom due to the stay-at-home order with COVID-19.
Carol?
Hi, this is Carol Roy. I'm participating electronically from home. I am alone. I can hear and see clearly. And this is due to the stay-at-home order for the pandemic. Thank you.
Amy?
This is Amy Kellner. I'm participating electronically from home. Attendance in person is not practical because of the COVID-19 crisis. I'm alone in the room and I can hear the proceedings.
And Tammy? I think you're on mute, Tammy.
My, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Weird. All right. Tammy Fried, participating from home because of the COVID-19 stay-at-home orders. I am alone in my room, but I have a question about this. Is this not a public meeting? So does it do we need to be in a confidential circumstance in our own locations?
I would defer that to Andy.
It's the basically the same rules that we follow for participating electronically, Tammy. There's no requirement that you're in a isolated by yourself, but at the same time, it's just putting the notice out to the community.
Very well.
And I too, Robert Mann, Chair. I am at home in my home office here. Essentially alone. My kids are upstairs on their Zoom things for school. But I am also home and conducting school board business do remotely due to the COVID-19 situation. Okay. So we're going to go back to agenda adjustments and are any voting that we're taking today will be by roll call. So it can be recorded as part of the Zoom meeting here. So I will call again for agenda adjustments.
The only thing I have, Mr. Mann, is that when we get to deliberations, I'd just like to select the date for our next Zoom meeting.
Okay, that's fine. The only one I have is that we have a new charter for a committee for our H-Smart work on the buildings. And I need and I believe Tammy, you're seeking board approval to activate that charter for the committee?
Correct.
Okay, so when would we like to, from agenda perspective, where would we want like to add that? I see the discussion is H-Smart there. Perhaps we could just, but we're going to need a deliberation. So maybe at the end of the other three, we can add that?
That would be fine.
Okay, could someone just note that and keep me honest on that as we go through the agenda? All right, seeing no other agenda items or adjustments, we'll go ahead and move to public input.
At this time, Bob, if you could check?
Okay, yeah. So if there's any public that would like to speak, if you just raise your hand in the participant pane window, we can we can call on you.
Yep. And the only thing I would also add to Bob's com, you know, comments is that public input is for the board to deliberate on issues and take input. So please be specific on the issues and agenda items that we're covering today. And try to be as specific as possible as to what you want the school board to consider as we go through the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I see Brooke Arthur has her hand raised.
Go ahead.
Trying to unmute myself. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the because I didn't know at first that what they need to do if they do want to speak is go to where it says participants and click on that to raise your hand. Because Zoom's newer to a lot of us. But I did find it. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone, anyone that wanted to possibly raise their hand knows that's what they need to do.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll just give another minute or two for people to find their hand raising just to make sure that we're not going by. Bob, any indicators yet?
No, we do not have any public comment at this time.
Okay, then we'll go we'll go ahead and move forward in the in the agenda. Let's move to nominations, resignations, and correspondence, please.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Bob here. We have a nomination for a special education teacher. Bob spearheaded the committee in the hiring, so I'd like to let him discuss the candidate and make the nomination.
Yeah, at this time, I would like to nominate Sadie Bradshaw to be the Hughes Case Manager for the 2020-2021 school year. Sadie has a Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Education and General Special Education as well. She also has a background in working with students with emotional behavioral disorders as well, which is a real critical need in our district. We would be proposing that for the 2021 school year that we would have her at a BA plus 15, Step 5, for a salary of $51,269.
I move to to accept the nomination as Brett.
A second.
Any discussion?
Bob, does she have any certifications in any of the special education skills that we seek?
Yes, with the EBD certification. She has that as a certification. And again, for those of you who may not remember, we left a case manager position vacant at Hughes in order to address the need that we had for the intensive preschool. So really, this is filling a position that went vacant for the previous school year and is much needed with the caseload numbers at Hughes.
So this is very much a backfill rather than a FTE addition?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just just want to be make that clarification for folks on the call. Any other pieces of discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Brooke?
Brooke Arthur, aye.
Carol?
Carol Roy, aye.
Tammy?
Fried, aye.
And Amy?
Amy Kellner, aye.
And Rob Mann, aye. Any other resignations, correspondence, or nominations?
None at this time.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to principal reports.
We are very fortunate today. We have both Paula and Candy joining us remotely. I'll just ask Paula to run through her information first, and when she's done, she'll turn it over to Candy for an update.
Sounds good.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to give a quick little update on how remote learning is going. I know last time that we met, we had some feedback. And I hope that parents have seen changes since. What we've done is make sure that our communication with families is still happening. We make sure whether it's phone calls through Zoom, email, things like that. We have been very understanding to families who have been going through other things besides just dealing with our remote learning. And I think we've done a really good job at that, being able to accommodate and help everybody to make sure that, you know, all the needs are being met. We have changed to weekly assignments so that we have parents are able to sort of figure out what they can do throughout the week. They get everything at the beginning of the week, and then they're able to sort out what they can do through the rest of the week. We're obviously continuing to get feedback and adjust and plan as, you know, as we see fit and as as we get that feedback. We are in the process of planning for a safe, you know, closure and wrap up and for students to get their things. All of those things are still in the works, but there's, you know, lots of angles to think of. We've definitely been moving kids along. Our second graders are going to be or already are participating in their at this time of year, they do their bio projects. We have our big third grade biography projects that are going on, and the third grade's working on a virtual way to get that done as well. We're looking at end-of-the-year celebrations in every classroom so that the kids can say goodbye to their kids. We've had a lot of guest teachers pop in on Zoom, so like our specialists, guidance, our nurse, whether it's administration, just somebody coming to make sure that they show their face so that the kids can see us as well. We have, we had to do virtual kindergarten information night, which has been sent out to families. We're doing a virtual screening process as well to make sure that we have the information we need to place all of those kiddos. Our custodians are doing a great job keeping the building clean and getting everything ready for all the work that's going to be done over the summer. We've got to clear out and repaint the music room, which needed it badly. Our gym has been repainted. If you go on Twitter, you can see some pictures of of some of those things that have happened. Our ramps repainted, all the railings and everything like that. It's just been every time I go in to check out the building, there's always something new that's been done. So they're keeping busy and working hard to get everything done. Our next goal is all the bathrooms and such. We're still trying to balance everything. It's difficult to be at home and trying to do everything that we still want to do. I heard a great quote or read it on Twitter where, you know, school hasn't closed, only the building has. So we're still working as hard as we can at home to make sure that we're touching base, making phone calls to parents just to see how things are going, reaching out via email and doing that as well with staff to make sure that we're just, you know, keeping our eyes on the students because that's what's most important to us. So as we continue to get the feedback, we'll continue to make changes, but I feel really happy with where we are. I'm amazed at what we've done with our special ed process in this in such a short amount of time. What we've done even supporting kids through RTI. I look at my own kids' virtual learning. And I'm also I'm also an advocate for my nephew who has needs in another district and we are still continue to be leaders in this area. So I'm very proud of our district and the leadership and everything that's gone through. So thank you guys for all your support and that communication going back and forth because I think that's just helping us move forward in a very positive direction.
Very good. Thanks very much. I guess we'll move over to Candy.
Thanks, Rob. Paula, you did a great summary about how thankful we are for everyone working really, really, really hard. We know at home, parents, you're working super hard with your children and really helping be that partner to all of us in in not our building, but still in school. I'm going to echo that, you know, we are doing the same types of things, making tweaks in our Google classrooms. What's developmentally appropriate for one student and is not always the same for other students. And so in the classroom, it's really easy to kind of bounce back and forth like you need this project broken down. You need it as a full, you know, month-long project. So just kind of working with our families to figure out, here's how we might post it. It's by subject or it's by week. What do you need? And being really available for one-on-one Zooms as well as group Zooms. We are trying to keep some traditions up that the kids love, like the Hughes News. And we have different guests come in that gets posted every every day. We have our specialists posting really fun activities that are designed to get kids outside or just be away from that academic piece for a little bit. And kids are enjoying that and some different challenges going on there for for some fun. And then we're just trying to think about ways that how do we end this school year in a great way? You know, some of the kids have been saying, are we coming back, right? Or are you making school longer, like all of those pieces? So just kind of reassuring them that the adults are working on that and that we are going to make the best, safest decision that we can for them and reassuring them. But, you know, the teachers are all in. They're working super hard. They are managing their own families as well as, you know, the children in the Hollis School District. They want to be responsive, and I've just seen them working all different hours, trying to be, okay, what works for this family, what doesn't? So I'm super proud of that that work going on. The building is looking spectacular for some of the projects that we can never get done. So I'm going to give a shout out to the entire custodial team who is showing up, being positive, trying to figure out solutions like we have really old lockers. If you had a chance to look at the really old lockers, thank you, Mrs. Young, for giving me a little clap emoji there. They are rested and old. They are stripping down every one of them. They look beautiful. The bleachers, I've never seen the bleachers look so fabulous. And today in a Zoom call, I showed some of the students what the bleachers look like apart. They're like, hey, come apart. They were like so amazed. It's going to be like a brand new school. So so we're excited about that, you know, little pieces that they they use every day and they they were shocked about the lockers too. So they're having some fun with that. And just reassuring them, you you had a chance to look at our Wing Awards, and that's a big, huge tradition that we have built around. How do you be a community? Where's that social, emotional learning? And, you know, even when kids do not need the help in the Zoom discussion rooms, we're seeing them come in just to say hi to each other, just to have a chance to connect. One thing that we're hearing is kids really miss that sort of downtime when they're just with other kids, right? And there's no grownups listening or watching. So how do we replicate that for them? And sometimes we use our breakout rooms and have a little prompt like, you know, here's a question and go do that and have those conversations. So just trying to figure out some ways, we will be planning something for our sixth graders who, you know, this is the last year they're in elementary. So how do we make that special for them? We're working with Officer Bergeron for the DARE program for our sixth graders. We're thinking about how do we just kind of make sure everyone knows how much we care about them. So just kind of holding it all together academically, socially, behaviorally for all of our our students. The the staff has been doing a yeoman's job of creating one-on-ones when kids need it. So Bob, I I know the special ed team's been working really hard on that, but so is the regular ed team. And just saying, what do you need? It doesn't matter if you're identified or not. What do you need and how can we help you move forward? And taking that feedback from parents as we get it, even though, like Paula says, we're doing a really good job compared to some other districts. We're we're kind of leaders there, but what can we do to tweak to get better? What's that small one more thing that we could do? And we're willing to continue to keep doing that to make sure we're meeting everyone's needs. So thanks for the time to like just tell you how it's going. I'm 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 tired, but I'm happy, you know, so it's two good things. Thanks, Rob.
Well, I appreciate, you know, Paula and Candy. I appreciate your all your creative work as, you know, we're getting close to the end of the school year and, you know, things that we need to do to try to make it special for, you know, our students that are moving on or moving up or whatever. And it's kind of like you want to do our best because those are special times, right? But really appreciate your your creative, you know, thinking around that and keeping it special for the students. At that this point, I'll open it up to any other board members for questions or comments for the principal reports.
I like seeing the maximization of the time getting to all those things that you can't get to when the kids are in the building all the time, having a cram into summer. So if there's a silver lining out of any of comes to the facilities, I think that's going to be it. So well done managing those projects, you guys.
Question, custodians have enough high-end PPE to protect them from each other?
So Tammy, we have been working with the business office to get whatever materials that they feel that they need. With the Hughes crew, there's six people in a building of 22,000 square feet. So they do not feel like at any time that they're being compromised. And just so you know, we've been working really hard on making sure there's limited public access to our buildings and that even our staff who come in, it's by appointment. There's only a certain amount of times that they can come in. And if they if they know what they want, we're not even asking them to go in the building. Our custodial team will come and get it. So the feedback from my crew is that they feel really safe in the practices we put in place.
Tammy, I would echo the same thing. We're doing the same things when we have places that need to be cleaned or repainted or whatever. It's usually very, you know, mapped out so that we're spread out and working separately from each other. So they've been able to, again, work with the business office for anything that they need. And things have been running pretty smoothly as far as access and feeling safe and all of that.
And if I may, Rob, the other question I had as both of you spoke was about staff meetings. Is it like this?
Yes, it is, Tammy. So I just had a staff meeting of 45 people, two screens like you see here, and we use our raise our hand button, just like we asked the participants here to do. And really kind of looking at the needs of the staff, like in these kinds of times, do we need more connection, right? And more more times, touch base. And what we're finding, like we do with our students, is everybody's in a different spot. So some people want to meet every week. Others are like, no, I'm good. I'll, you know, so we're trying to balance those needs with our buildings.
Yeah, it's very difficult to manage, I would say. It's a it's a huge crew coming in on a Zoom meeting. So we we have, you know, a set protocol now, you know, you come in, you're muted, and we go through agenda items, and then we can have questions on agenda items, very similar to what we're doing here. And it's, you know, it's business as usual because we're still trying to get, you know, like we're working on placement. We're working on end-of-the-year stuff. We have, we have, you know, that office stuff that still needs to get done. So all of that stuff continues to be part of the agendas.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the principals? Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead to the discussion portion. Transportation, please.
That's me, Rob. I just want to let the board know that we are in constant communication with our transportation company. As you know, there's been many developments via the CARES Act and a number of things that have come out. So we're working with our regional manager, our attorney, the bus company, and our business office to iron out the details. We had a communication from them yesterday where they sent us an Excel spreadsheet kind of detailing their thoughts on what I'll call essential components of their business. That was forwarded over to our attorney yesterday. We have a conference call set up on Monday, and it's my intent to bring something forward to our next meeting, kind of to put into numbers what we've been discussing. I will let you know that we, it's spring, so all our buses were inspected recently and passed inspection. They are run on a regular basis because they need to be run. Sitting idle doesn't really work. They're started on a regular basis. And STA, Student Transportation America, has two full-time employees still working at the Bus Bond to ensure all those components and dates and inspections are adhered to. So probably in the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to provide you with a compensation breakdown. Because as you know, there are components that are tied into our contract, and then there are other components that are calculated on a daily basis. We do not compensate the bus company for fuel. We buy our fuel directly, so those costs are not being paid. And we expect to come in with some sort of recommendation for the percentages. And as you know, that goes across all three districts, so we're trying to coordinate that. And that's why we're looking at a meeting relatively in the middle of May to finalize that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, I had one relating to the the gas costs and stuff. That that seems to be a topic that comes up a lot that I'm hearing. And can you expand a little bit about how the the gas charges for transportation are kind of, is it as per use or or is it a contracted number?
Our contract is written as a contracted use, meaning that we don't have a fuel charge in the agreement. We have a local agreement with a fueling vendor, and the buses are filled there, and that bill comes directly to the SAU. So that component has never been in our contract and continues to be outside the contract. So it's it's not a per mile. It's it's a per, you know, bus fill-ups on a regular basis, and Kelly coordinates that through the business office.
So it's like point of use, and we're we're filling up as as they're consuming gas. And since they're not consuming gas, we're not paying for anything like contractually in that regard.
That is absolutely correct. The only use the bus buses get right now are just their regular runs that they would do during the summer as well. Just for to make sure that they, you know, again, turned on run and that there are no issues.
And we are doing some food delivery there, right? So there is some, you know, gas consumption at that level, I suspect.
We have been using our, when we need to do food deliveries, we have been using our school vans from the co-op, which are owned by us. But the vast majority of the food services is delivered by a parent pickup model.
Okay, is there is there any cross charges for this district using the co-op van?
We have been using the the co-op vans to deal with any issues that come up. If we had to deliver something to a student or anything like that, we would use those vans. And again, the mileage is minimal. Most times, we're able to do multiple district runs, so it just makes it very efficient. And again, if it were to become a cost factor, which I don't believe it will, Kelly would do that through the business office on the backend.
I see. So just to be clear, those those vans can be used just SAU-wide, not just at the co-op district?
They're they're owned by the co-op. But at this time, during these unique situations, it's just much more cost-effective for us to work through the vans than it would be to put a different transportation mode on the on the streets.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to any other membership questions for Andy? Or from the membership?
If no one has a question, I'd just like to offer information, and that is that on the Hollis School Board's page on the SAU website, under the administrative link, anyone can look at the current contract. It's written in plain English. It's not gobbledygook. And it's not that long, and it's worth taking a look and familiarizing yourself with its components.
Thanks, Tammy. Any other questions or comments for Andy at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to special education update.
First, I'd just like to reiterate what both Paula and Candy said, and that is just to thank all of our staff in Student Services, you know, our case managers, our counselors, our nurses, related service providers and our and our paras. I, you know, my judgment is that people are working harder than they ever have before. And as a result of that, we really have seen a continuity of of service for our students. And I would also say that the vast majority of our students are receiving the same level of services that they were when we were in the physical school environment. I would even go a step further, you know, if we identify that there are some students that are are struggling with the with remote learning, you know, we're actually able to provide them some some additional supports. And a lot of that is really the result of the work of our paraeducators who, they are busy. They're working individually and in small groups with students. There's a lot of Zoom meetings occurring. There's phone calls occurring. There's a lot of work online. So a lot of the successes that our students who are identified are experiencing is really the result of the team effort. But a lot of the support that we're able to to maintain in remote learning, you know, remote learning is not easy. And if you're a student with a disability, it can be even more challenging. So I'm grateful for all the work that's being done. Really been able to pretty much maintain the same level of service that we would in in the physical environment. And, you know, right now, we're in the midst of planning our extended school year program. At this point, we are looking at really two paths, but it likely will be that ESY will be for the vast majority But it likely will be that ESY will be for the vast majority of students in the remote learning environment. And we're tentatively looking at dates from the end of June to the, to the second week of August. That is an extension of ESY from what we typically would do. And really for two reasons. First, on the front end, you know, if a school ends a week early because of April break or whatever the, the decision is made, you know, we want to be able to account for that. We don't want a, a big lag time between the end of the school year and the start of ESY. And furthermore, it's an extra week in August because of what is, you know, would be a later start to the school year if we did start in September. So entertain any questions that folks might have in regards to special education, student services, or, or any other topic?
So Bob, in, in delivering ESY, do you anticipate it looking or feeling different than, than what we're currently doing from a remote learning perspective? Or do you anticipate differences as we move into ESY? Or do you, are we going to use pretty much the exact same model?
I think, you know, right now, the, the plan is that we're, we'll remain in a remote learning environment. You know, there's a very small population. And when I say very small, I'm going to put it at about 1%, where, you know, we, you know, might look at what would a model of in-person services look like? Can we pull that off within the guidelines established by the CDC, the Department of Education? So the contingency plan would be, you know, things really change and we're able to open up. But I think the most realistic view is that we will continue in remote learning. And for a lot of our related services, which is the bulk of the services delivered during our ESY program, our speech and our OT, we've had a lot of success delivering them through Zoom. And I think we would be able to, to continue that model into the summer.
Any other questions?
Bobby, are you saying 1% of the student population or 1% of students identified?
No, I, I would say 1% of students identified.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thanks, Bob, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep.
All right, at this point, I'd like to move on to any remote learning updates.
Okay.
We heard from, from, I know, I was just going to say, we, we heard some updates from the principals, but by all means, Gina.
Okay, so I'll just backtrack a little bit. So on April 2nd, we sent a survey out to families in the morning. And we closed the survey in the evening of the 6th. We had nearly 49% participation across all six of our schools. And I just can't say enough about how well we've, we've all adapted to this new environment, whether you're a teacher, an administrator, a support staff member, a student, or a family. You know, the amount of learning that has had to take place just to adjust to the system, not just to actually participate in the remote learning, is just incredible. All those comments that were part of the survey were read. Every single comment was read. I worked with each individual principal to kind of review them just based on their building alone. And we developed an implementation plan for how are we going to address some of the concerns? I mean, there's a ton of positive feedback, but every new opportunity creates an opportunity for growth. And so we really looked at it that way. We looked at, created specific building implementation plans. And these plans really demonstrated a willingness for our teachers and our administrators to receive feedback, which isn't always easy, and then grow and learn and implement. And so we have put in place a ton of changes, as Candy and Paula have already said. But now that we're halfway through roughly remote learning, and we can sort of, we're starting to talk about the end of the school year in this meeting, it's really important now that we begin the conversations with administrators and classroom teachers in their PLCs to think about the, and do a curriculum analysis. So what topics were potentially not covered? Or what content was covered, but maybe at a lesser depth? And really, and this is what we do every year. The difference this year is that there might be more, you know? We'll, we'll probably, we'll probably go in a different direction in terms of our, our plan for that. And then time will be given to figure out how do we then implement next year the curriculum that sort of starts from a different place? But what's great about most of our standards is that they spiral through. So the intention is that you're going to see concepts year after year and learn them just a little bit better each time. So rather than saying, remember when, it's a little bit different. It's, let's introduce the topic based on not the foundation you had maybe in fourth grade, but understanding that maybe that foundation wasn't there in fourth grade, we have to go back to the third grade. But this is, you know, what teachers do best, figuring out the best ways to educate our kids. But we're, we have to be intentional about it. Let's see what else. But as we learn more about restrictions that may or may not be in our future, you know, who knows when we're absolutely going to be open and available to have our schools re-enter our building? If we begin the year in remote, time will tell. But we will have additional professional development in time to figure out the best way to open a school year. And in the remote environment, because I think it's different closing the school in the remote, but opening with brand-new classes of, of students and trying to create that classroom community. So we're definitely thinking about right now, and thinking about in the, you know, next few weeks, and then again in the next few months, and how we're going to just continue to move forward. But I can't say enough about how impressed I am with the hard work and dedication of everybody, families, teachers, our administrators. Every week, I'm on a call with folks from all over the state, and I am so thankful and so honored to be part of this district where we're so dedicated to, to working with our kids, so.
Very good, thanks, Gina. Any questions or comments for Gina from the membership?
Question, I guess, and someone else is asking. I assume all of you are working very hard on having Plan A, Plan B, Plan C for the fall.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we always have a Plan A and a Plan B, but this is really like Plan C, Plan D. I mean, you just, we, we were never really trained to kind of figure this out, but here we are. And, you know, we're figuring it out. So now we're just using every moment to think of the what-ifs? And how can we do this best? And how can we improve what we're, what we're currently doing right now? Like I said, every, every opportunity is an opportunity for growth.
Go ahead, Brooke.
Hi, thanks, Gina. I thought the survey was great, and I appreciated as a parent being able to fill, fill it out, and I'm sure you got a lot of great input. One of the things that I've worried about as a community and school board member is, you know, you said there was the, what, I think you said 50% response for those kids and families that are harder to reach, that aren't as, you know, they're not reaching out on their own, they're not responsive on their own. What are the, some of the things that the district is doing to make sure that every single child and family is connected to in a meaningful way? As this news?
Yeah, so I'll jump in really quickly, but I know that the principals can do a great job of saying specifically, building specific plans. But if a child is not participating and they haven't reached out to the school to say, we're not feeling well, or we need a day off, just that there's too much going on. So if we see that a child isn't participating, then the teacher tries to make contact. And if that doesn't work, then we reach out to the school counselor or to the building principal to really follow through. And how, you know, what's going on, you know, how, what is it that I can do to help you? Sometimes there's something bigger going on, and sometimes just a family needed a break, but I'll let the principals chime in.
Brooke, yeah, that's our, that's our process. You know, every, if we give kids about two, two to three days to see if they're responding or getting work in and whatnot, and then that gets relayed to myself and our guidance counselor. And then they reach out to the family to see what's going on. And nine times out of 10, there's usually something else going on where we, we just need to, they, they haven't been able to reach out to us because they're dealing with something else. I would say that our participation, participation rate has been fantastic in remote learning. And which has been great. I think that being flexible has helped. But we are, I feel very confident that we are very much on reaching out to, to families who have not reached out to us or who we're not hearing from. And I feel good about the steps we've taken to either help support them or get them back on track. So I, I feel really good about that process.
Thank you. I, I like hearing that because, you know, not having the kids being able to physically come together, I think a lot about, you know, we're all these islands here, but community is so important. So it's good to hear that you guys have those measures in place.
Brooke, I'll just speak a little bit. I'm sure Paula has this process too. We have a wellness team that meets every week. We talk about families that, you know, we might be concerned about for different reasons, not just the social emotional piece. You know, is there food insecurity? Is there, you know, something that we know about that happened to Grammy or Grandpa or Auntie from other things that are happening? So how do we take care of the whole child? Staff can always come into that at the Zoom meeting. Obviously, they can come in and have those conversations. And we look at who's the best adult to make those connections. And then the process is just like Gina outlined. We, we give kids about two days. We haven't heard from them or seen them in a Zoom. We're calling, we're emailing. Our kids are a little bit bigger, so we can reach out directly to them, but then we're also reaching out to families. So we agree with you that it is much more important right now in this remote time to stay connected socially. Because we, we are, like Gina said, going to reset. We're going to figure out what kids need when they come back in. But they need to be loved and cared for and know that we're here right now. And that's why we're saying to all the parents, don't fight with your children about work. Don't spend five or six hours, you know, trying to figure something out. We want you to cut it off. We want you to love those kids, right? And then let us know. Because sometimes, I don't know if this happens in your family, but it does happen in mine, they always listen better to the teachers than they did to their parents. And I was one of those kids who, my mom could say whatever, but if my teacher said it, I followed, right? Some of you are laughing, that might have been some of you, right? So we're happy to do that. We want them in those environments and not a lot of stress. So just keep reaching out to us too. If you have a neighbor or someone that you know isn't reaching out to us, let us know. Because we're trying to use all the avenues that we have. But sometimes you might be on a social media group or something, and you say, hey, Candy, I know this person hasn't reached out. Maybe just do a wellness check and don't say I called, right? Don't tell, I told you. But we want to take care of each other, right? It's really important at this time.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you very much.
And I ask a, a follow-on question. I think Brooke's question is exceptional. From the other angle, if we have families who are kind of, you know, being approached in all these different means that you've described, and, and the children aren't participating adequately for the academic gain that's available through what we're providing, that's a different kind of problem long-term, I think. And I'm just curious, you know, how you're thinking about dealing with that?
I'm sorry, Tammy.
Let me, let me, yeah, I'll clarify. So like, I have a friend who's a teacher in California, and she's saying, you know, she sends emails, tries to connect with students Zoom, et cetera. And all the, the non-participating students, and this is a high school teacher, it's a little different. But, you know, she sends all emails, cc'd to the guidance counselor and the parents. And, you know, there's a subset of students who do not respond, parents do not respond, et cetera. So for this particular person, again, outside of our district, the question is, will she be held liable or responsible for these students not doing as well? Because they're not participating and she doesn't have them, you know, physically present? Does that make more sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, so we don't, so some states choose student performance measurements or performance growth to determine the performance of a teacher, and, and we don't do that. And when the students return in the fall, as they return in any fall, we're going to be in 50 different places for 50 different kids. And we take a look at all of them, and then we move them forward. And, you know, some might move more in one year. They just have, you know, that their brain is ready to absorb more content and, and they're ready to learn more. If you think back to early child development of, you know, the kid that's really struggling to crawl doesn't maybe do a lot with eating, right? But then all of a sudden, they're crawling, and then they start picking up eating solid foods. And so kids are going to grow and develop at different rates all the time. And we take a look at where the kids are, fulfill in their needs. And then we get the most out of what they're doing. And we figure out where they are based on our internal assessments that we do. So we're, we're going to know, and we're going to meet their needs. And we're not going to say that, you know, it was, it was Ms. Bergsberg's fault and, you know, let's, you know, put a scarlet letter on her. I mean, we're all together. If we're not a community right now, then.
All together.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, we're, we're, like I said, we're still continuing that team approach. You know, if, if teachers have a concern about a child and they're not working, we're, we're still meeting in PLCs weekly. We're still inviting our reading specialists, our math specialists to our meetings. We're still having that conversation of what can be done. So there's still all of that, just as we would do if we were in the building and a child isn't, isn't making growth or isn't doing what there's, you know, what they, what we think they can do. So we're, all of those conversations and all of those things are still in place. They're just, you know, they're just being done virtually.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Gina, Paula, and Candy. We'll go ahead and move on to our H-Smart project update.
I'll start the discussion and turn it over to Tammy to talk about the charter. I just want to let the board know that, as you probably recall, the voters approved our lease project for the two buildings. Three weeks ago, we started and reformed what was our original committee to start focusing in on H-Step, which Tammy will talk about in a minute. Yesterday, we sent out the request for proposals to a variety of leasing companies. And we expect to hear back on the opening bids on May 19th. That will give us the funding, once the board approves that funding, to start to move forward with the various projects that'll be happening. We have divided the projects into this summer and next summer based on the expertise of the people on the committee. And Tammy, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit about H-Step and the charter. The work on that.
Yeah, if I might just jump in just for a second, Tammy, before you, just to kind of frame the conversation for folks that are on the call. So there are, when, when, when the board and the district is taking on these type of projects, you know, as we've seen in the past couple of years, the energy work last year was the facility studies where we're looking, we're looking at various aspects of our hard assets in, in the district. And now the approved projects that we're doing on the schools, the upgrades and so forth, we often have to have a committee to look at these details. Because we, as a board, we can't, there's too much to, to consider with all the other work that a board needs to do within the short time we get together. So often, we, we, we put together and convene a, a committee to do that. And as a matter of best practice, we build a document that states the, the purpose of the committee, how long the committee shall be convened for, and what their deliverables are to the board. So they work for the board and advise the board. So what Tammy's going to cover is the document that charges this committee with, with their deliverables and what they're, what they need to do. So it kind of directs them and gives them a bit of a compass in terms of how they proceed with their work. And it's comprised pretty much with the, the committees that preceded it, because we want to keep the members. But it doesn't have to be that way. It can, it usually, when a committee forms, it can be comprised of, you know, a, a whole bunch of different folks with, you know, from a community or otherwise. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it off to Tammy for details on the, on the charter.
Well, my comments are what Rob said.
Oh, did I steal your?
No, you've, you said it perfectly, thank you. That was perfect, that's exactly right. And I don't have a lot to add. I guess, I, I hope everyone got the email that where I sent you the draft for your comments. One thing I thought I'd comment on is the little graphic that shows who's currently sort of assigned to serve on this committee. As we said, I think at our reorganization meeting, the chairman asked that all of us continue serving in the positions we already had in order to just maintain the consistency and stability. So I'm reassigned to this committee, and Rob has always served as an advisory member of the committee. So he's there on the chart. Eric Rehert, if you don't know him, is a Hollis parent. Eric Rehert, if you don't know him, is a Hollis parent. He is a professional in the field of smart energy efficiency appliances. He's the chair of the Hollis Energy Committee, which is an ad hoc committee of the selectmen and its members are appointed by the select board. So he's proved, he's literally been crawling through the buildings, installing devices, figuring out how big components work. He discovered that the hot water heater in the kitchen at Hughes has a manual timer on it, which is why it was coming on during the worst time of day. Instead of a less expensive time of day, he's done remarkable work and continues to do more and for us. And all of this is as a volunteer in town. I just really wanted to let you all know what incredible contributions he's making. Mike Levitt is, is also a member of the Hollis Energy Committee, retired engineer, et cetera. But he was elected to the Hollis Budget Committee as well and was appointed from the Budget Committee to serve on our H-Smart group. And he, his contributions are just tremendous. Andy obviously and Kelly worked tirelessly on this. And our, our architect, Dave Ely, is the gentleman who helped us build out the Hollis, Hollis Primary School. How it looks, but more importantly, how the, how, how the functionalities changed with respect to, in particular, the outside wrapping of the building for energy efficiency purposes. Dick Henry has been with us from the very beginning. He had been, he had been recommended to the Hollis Board before any of this started as the energy consultant to turn to. And he's provided just invaluable advice and leadership. As we've tried to work to remediate these old buildings and give them another whole set of generations of lifetimes to come. I'm happy to take any questions. I think the rest is self-explanatory.
Tammy, I had a question related to timeframe. So, you know, we're up against, you know, this, the COVID-19 issues and, and things. I suspect that will kind of translate to maybe some delays on getting work started. I don't know.
To the contrary, Rob, to the contrary, with no students in the building, we have a little bit more freedom to schedule some of the work, you know, for H-Step. We were so tightly constrained to those times when students weren't in the buildings. So for example, when we were talking before about ESY being our extended school year program being remote. I'm sitting here cheering because that, that was a scheduling challenge during the H-Step project to make sure that our students and staff were in a safe place while, and some of our HPS kids had to be moved up to Hughes. So the, the absence of students and staff in the building is actually a help. In addition, because so many jobs and contracts have been either postponed or canceled across the economy. Some of our, some of our contractors that we're hoping to use are actually a little more free than they might have otherwise been. So we're hoping that we actually see a benefit to this project, again, as a silver lining issue.
Do, do we feel we can keep within a year timeframe to complete everything that's?
The timeframe for this project has always been like H-Step, a two, quote unquote, a two summer type of project. There isn't any way for our staff to oversee all of the components in one year. There's no way to juggle all the components because some of them are scaffolded one on the other. So currently we're, the meetings with the group are working to schedule what's prioritized for this coming summer and school year. And then what will be, you know, scheduled for next year. So for example, boiler room consolidation, changing out the oil tank at the primary school, et cetera. Some of those things are going to be left for the following year in order to get higher priority heat base, you know, heating based equipment and work done this coming summer.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Tammy? Okay, moving on, we're going to hear updates on school best breakfast prices, FY '21. Andy, you running point on that? Or you're, you're on mute otherwise?
I can start talking about it. There's the memo. Essentially the cost of fruit has gone up. And, you know, every year we take a look at our, our lunch and breakfast prices and make sure that they're appropriately matched. And it looks as though we need to increase the price of breakfast from $1.50 to $1.75. The cost of free lunch is still free and reduced lunches still at a reduced rate, but this is for the, the standard cost of breakfast.
So it's, it's not going to necessarily generate hardship for any families or anything by this increase?
No, we don't anticipate that, Rob. It's just something to address the, really the, just the cost of fruit. It's going up across the SAU. So we're making the same proposal at the co-op in Brookline. If it ever impacted a student in terms of being able to purchase a breakfast or not purchase a breakfast, we would step in as administration, the SAU, to rectify that situation. I do also just want to take a minute to just recognize Amy Custody and food service workers. They have been doing outstanding work. As you know, we deliver meals on Mondays and Wednesdays. On a Monday, you get four meals. On a Wednesday, you get six meals. So that all of our students and families who are in need are being fed during this time. Amy has just been doing outstanding work along with all the ladies who have come in and make this happen. And I really want to commend her and I'd also like to recognize N68. They're a nonprofit group in town and many of our teachers participate in that program. And they have been doing just fabulous things, securing the goods and services that people need for the weekends. So no family has to worry over the weekend. And we have a virtual fundraiser going on right now with a 5K. We traditionally selected charity to assist and they selected N68. And that 5K virtual has already raised $3,700 to be donated to N68 to continue purchasing these food supplies for these families. And I just can't thank the community enough and the staff and everybody for working together. And it's just been really very uplifting in the middle of all this negativity to see all the people rise up and do the tremendous things that these communities have been doing. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thanks, Andy. Any questions or comments relating to the breakfast program?
Well, not to the breakfast program, but I've been doing food pickup for a family in town from our Monday and Wednesday service. And those folks are out there, rain, shine, cold, hot. They change gloves for every single car that pulls up. They were wearing their masks. They have a whole protocol about pushing a stainless steel trolley out to the car and waiting for the driver to, you know, they've got a whole protocol for safety. I just can't say enough about how careful they're being.
Thanks, Tammy. I missed the information on the N68 fundraiser, the 5K. Could you reiterate how we could donate to that if, or if we can still donate to it?
Candy, can I ask you to jump in for a second? I just can't off the top of my head think of it.
Absolutely.
I can send you a link as well, Brooke.
Yeah, I have a whole write-up that I'm going to share with the rest of the administrators in all the buildings. But Karen Miller, who organizes our annual talent show, we had made plans to have the talent show this year to support N68 before all of this happened. And we were feeling really bad that we can't do that. We didn't want to ask our families for money. We don't know where everyone is. So we just made it optional. She's doing it on her own with all of our support. So I will send you, maybe Andy, I can send it to you and you can send it to the board or I don't know what the protocol is. But it's a nice write-up. You fill out a Google form, you make your 5K, whatever you want. We made a bib. I take a picture, we're going to post it and just to say thank you. And it's a really, it's a $25 donation for your entry into the race. And then all of that, because there's no overhead, is going directly to our chapter of N68.
So was it a staff, it was a staff organized? It was with, with the staff?
It is, comes from one of my staff members who is organizing it sort of, it's not a school sponsored event. Just like the other, just so you know, disclosure. But yeah, she's organizing it for us. And lots of staff members are helping to, you know, create the bib and make sure we, you know, have enough capacity to post all the things and everything. But yeah, and, and of course, we still have staff who are volunteering their time outside of the school day, whatever that is now, to come in and pack bags. And to just go shopping and make sure we have all of that. And now this is one less thing that the organizers have to do over the summer for, for raising money. Because I think it's, you know, anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 we need to support the program every year. So they do fundraising a lot and this is just a really great way for us to give back as a community.
Thank you.
And just as a side note for all the folks on the line, there is a public Facebook group called N68 Hours of Hunger Virtual 5K Fundraiser. You just have to request to join. So if you want to follow along in there as well, Brooke, I just added you. Anyone else just chat me? I'll put you in if I can, if I can.
Very good. Okay, everyone, why don't we move on to deliberations to see what action the board will take regarding authorizing, the superintendent to hire, accept resignations and terminate staff during the months until returning to in-person school. So.
Go ahead, Andy.
This is a yearly request and it's, it's kind of interesting this year. In some ways you would almost think we don't need it because we'll, we'll be meeting probably more often than we traditionally do. But during our recent hires, Bob will attest, it's a very, very competitive market. And people are getting multiple offers. There are not as many people applying for teaching as there have been in past years. So by granting me this authority, you allow me to get out and hire the best and make that offer. And I know that was the situation with our recent hire who were very excited to have at Hughes for special education. She was waiting on multiple offers, but we happened to be her first choice and was willing to wait. That doesn't happen all the time. What I traditionally do is either via email or the next available board meeting, we bring you all the hires to make you aware of what happened. It's just the, the actual contract is just signed by me. So it's just, that's the major difference that I have authority to sign the contract. And it doesn't have to have Rob's signature.
So I'll entertain a motion in second from, from the membership.
I move to give the superintendent his designated authority to hire, fire and do other administrative tasks with respect to personnel.
A second.
Until they, how, how, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry.
It's open ended apparently in my.
If I don't do the motion right, then Dawn McMillan gets mad at me and then I feel bad. So you haven't met Dawn. She's wonderful. So I think I'm supposed to add to the motion. Until the COVID-19 restrictions are lifted and we can have in-person meetings again, is that?
Well, I would just, I would just point, I would just point out that in our outline that Dawn furnished us would have the language of the motion if you so need it.
I can move. I can move then. I move to allow the superintendent to hire, accept resignations and terminate staff during the months until returning to in-person school.
Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion or any further discussion?
Teamwork right there.
Okay, seeing none by roll call vote. Brooke?
Brooke Garther, aye.
Carol?
Carol Roy, aye.
Amy?
Amy Kellner, aye.
Tammy?
Tammy Fried, aye.
And Rob Mann, aye. Next item is to see what action the board will take regarding the last day of school, of the school year.
Hey, everybody on the phone. It's what you've been waiting for.
When we look at all the different components that go into this, this year, it's slightly different than traditional years. So what we're recommending is what I'll call a phased in approach to the closing of school. And that would be phase one of remote learning would close for anybody who was, what I would say, up to date, current, didn't have any issues on makeup or remediation. We would use the week of June 8th through the 12th to do remediation, to continue delivering special ed services, to work with any students who may be slightly behind needing to make up work. We would also use that week to do some, what I would call virtual celebrations and try to bring closure to the school year. These dates comply with the collective bargaining agreements and all the different things that go into those pieces. As much as remote learning is not the ideal, it goes very well for us. And we are really trying to limit students falling behind. And the date of closure, as Bob spoke to earlier, also impacts extended school year. So we're trying to make sure that some of our neediest learners are not further hindered by our end of the date for the school year. So we would look at a phased approach. June 5th, many students would be just using the following week to catch up, celebrate those type of things. Some students would be using Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to be working with regular ed, special ed staff to close out the school year and do assignments and catch up. And then teachers would be organizing with the building principals, a series of events those days, the 8th through the 12th. And then all students would be done June 12th. And I'm happy to entertain questions or see where we're at.
Just to clarify what you just said, Andy, so it would be a complete week going right through to the 5th? And then only the following week would be if needed and celebrations? If needed, special, okay. Could you, for the, for the public's, because we've gotten a little bit of this background information, but can you also kind of outline? Cause a lot of folks have been asking, how do we back up from what our expected end date was? How do we get to the 5th? I know you mentioned CBAs and things like that, but, you know, we got rid of April vacation. We have all these different things. Can you just give that detail to them for their benefit, please?
Yes, we, we could say that we probably would have been done the school year, the middle of the month, somewhere around the 19th. Probably would have most likely been our closing date with snow days. By going over April vacation, as we're doing this week, we gave back basically those snow days. We also took into account that we're not doing state assessments this year. So we're actually picking up instructional hours. We would have been in school anyways, but when a student is taking a test and not necessarily getting the same instructional practices that they would be. So that's where we came up with closing the year of phase one on June 5th. We don't traditionally look at the year in terms of hours, because if we just looked at it in terms of hours, we'd be somewhere early May. We have one of the longest school days in the state. The school boards have always based their school years on the curriculum to be covered, not the hours in the state. So that's how we arrived at it. I will tell the board that we will look at during our May meeting, looking at maybe just extending Memorial Day weekend by a day on either side or something like that. We're also trying to balance the situation. You know, I think I could speak in my own house. It wears thin. You know, and as much as everybody's doing a tremendous job, but at the same time, when I see some of the districts that are closing early, it's because they, they simply aren't able to deliver remote learning. So they're just trying to end their school years as early as possible.
I think we need a motion before we continue this discussion. I like the formalities of school board.
Yeah.
I'd like to move to set the last day of the 2019, 2020 school year as June 12, 2020.
Is that the right verbiage to echo?
I'm reading it off, I'm reading it off of, I finally found my outline. So that's.
No, but I wanted clarification on whether we should be mentioning June 5th also in the language of the motion.
I think we have to.
I don't understand why. The last day of school has a specific function and it fits, it allows us to fit the CBA's obligations, our academic obligations, et cetera, as we see fit.
Yeah. And I would say that if we have the end of the year celebrations taking place that last week, as we traditionally do in our last week, those are, those are still school days. But we just wouldn't have new instruction. We would have the remediation. We have special ed services. We have catching up on those odds and ends of last minute pieces, but, but the last day really would be the.
pieces. But but the last day really would be the 12.
All right. So could you just restate it, please?
Yeah, I moved to set the last day of the 2021, sorry, of the 2019 2020 school year as June 12, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
Well, just because I'm this way, anyone interested in the collective bargaining agreements and their restrictions and, you know, responsibilities, etc., can find them posted on the SAU 41 website. They're in plain English. They're not hard to read. And there are so many people on this on this meeting. I'd like everyone to know that there are public documents, just like the bus contract is, and you can look them up and take in that information easily.
The only other question I had was actually for Bob. How does this affect your start date for extended school year? Would that be the week following June 12? Or what would that look like?
So we are going to start extended school year on June 29. And again, that and if it runs until August 14, you're looking at an extended school year that is about two weeks longer. It's not ideal, because typically for our students with significant disabilities, we don't like to see more than a lapse of a week. And for students who typically participate in ESY, two weeks. So we were extending that out. However, I would argue that by adding an additional the additional time to ESY, I feel like we'll be able to account for any possible regression. That's why I just feel it's really important that if that week of the eighth, we are continuing to provide special ed services, we're reducing the possibility of regression for our students with in ESY.
Are there any opportunities to to close that gap between the time we were done and ESY picks up?
That that possibility exists. That would have to be a deliberation by an IEP team. But I do believe by adding the two weeks of ESY, I think we do we do account for that.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to point out that ESY is explicitly designed to prevent regression to the greatest degree possible is explicitly designed not to introduce new and new instruction. So to the degree that it's we run it longer, tell me if I'm wrong, Bob, it helps those students not lose ground, but they won't receive new instruction because that's not what extended school year is designed to do.
Exactly. And again, in an ideal world, we would like to see maybe a two week window of time. And again, there's some research to support that. However, you have to balance, you know, how long do you want kids, especially for moving into a remote environment? You know, how long do you want them to participate in an extended school year program? And I do believe we're striking the right balance between addressing any possible regression and not having kids spend their entire summer on a computer for for ESY. So as long as we maintain that special ed services continue the week of that eighth, with obviously some exception for end of the year parties and celebrations and things like that, I'm comfortable with with the window and with the start date of the of the 29 for ESY.
And I also asked about budgets. If you're talking about June 29 through August 14, that's, you know, bridges two different fiscal years. And if it's a little longer than normal, also, do we have the budget to pay for that as a trip up the business office?
We we do. Again, if you look at the cost savings related to ESY transportation, ESY transportation accounts for a significant portion of the budget. But in addition, there's also IDEA funds that can be used and additional funds that the district is receiving as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak. So from a budgetary standpoint, it is there is additional incurred costs, but we'll be able to to manage that.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? I'll go ahead and call the vote by roll call. Brooke Arthur?
I.
Carol?
Carol Roy, I.
And Amy?
Amy Kellner, I.
Tammy?
Tammy Farid, I.
And Rob Mann, I. We'll move on to the other deliberations to see what action the board will take regarding school breakfast prices for the 2021 school year.
This is just the formal vote on the discussion we had regarding increasing the breakfast price to $1.75.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move to, sorry, trying to take notes on our meeting.
Tammy, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Weird. I was pressing it. It just wasn't doing anything. So where was we? We were we were.
You're.
Making a motion.
Right, sorry. Motion, I move to increase breakfast, the price of breakfast to $1.75 for the FY21 school.
Is there a second?
Do we want to use the exact verbiage that's in the thing, mentioning the date that it starts? Does it matter?
It won't take place until the the first days. So I don't think you necessarily have to have the dates. If you'd like to, that's okay.
Just making sure the notes we have specifically call out August 1, 2020. So I didn't know if we wanted to make motion of that. But I'll second Tammy, so we're fine with it.
I have a question now that Carol has asked that made that point. If do kids in extended school year have access to breakfast and lunch purchases?
No.
No. Okay, all right. I never actually knew that. I'm glad to that you brought that up.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the vote via roll call. Brooke Arthur?
Brooke Arthur, I.
Carol?
Carol Roy, I.
Amy?
Amy Kellner, I.
And Tammy?
Tammy Farid, I.
Rob Mann, I. I know we also have a under under agenda adjustments. We have we're seeking approval of the committee charter. So I'll entertain a motion on that. You are on mute again. Tammy?
So so look, here's the deal. Sometimes when I'm on mute, I can press my space bar, and it releases the mute. And then sometimes it doesn't release the mute. And I don't know why, because this is the first meeting where this is happening. So I apologize for.
You have to hold your space bar down to keep talking.
Right. And that's what I've been doing through multiple meetings and multiple environments for the past since this all started. But today, it seems to not want to be cooperating, and I apologize. So I'm I'm moving I move to adopt the charter as presented for the H-Smart Committee Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. The only thing I would add, Tammy, I read it. It, you know, we we leveraged off of a lot of the verbiage from our previous charters. So I had no problem with it. I thought, you know, it was well written. Appreciate your efforts to get that done in such a short time.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I'll go ahead and call the vote by roll call. Brooke Arthur?
Brooke Arthur, I.
Carol Roy?
Carol Roy, I.
Amy Kellner?
Amy Kellner, I.
And Tammy?
Tammy Farid, I.
Rob Mann, I. Is there any other business? I think we're at the end at 5, 425. Over today. So I'll go ahead.
Rob, I have one question before we have the non debatable motion to adjourn. Can we get the we voted at a previous meeting on the 2020 2021 school year calendar? Can we please get that up on the SAU website? Folks have been asking just so they can start planning for.
Carol.
Only then.
The other thing, Mr. Chair, could we look at would the board be able to do a May 13 for a meeting date? Time to be determined once we find out the other two boards could do that?
Checking schedules right now. May 13? Uh, yeah, I can do it.
Andy, would it be possible for us to rotate? So maybe the Hollis School Board meeting isn't during the workday next time around? Because I know that's a difficult spot for both Rob and myself.
I can absolutely take care of that as we go through. What I'll do is I'll get confirmation from each of the boards today, and then we'll pick times.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Appreciate the accommodation.
I very much appreciate everyone's flexibility to be able to conduct our school board business under under, you know, remote, you know, tools and so forth, and just being, you know, very flexible with time and things from from the membership and also administration. So just to want to say to everyone, appreciate your time. And I'm glad we can still get our board work done in a timely manner. So thanks again. And with that, I will entertain a non debatable motion.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
By roll call, Brooke Arthur?
Brooke Arthur, I.
Carol Roy, I.
Amy Kellner, I.
Tammy Farid, I.
Rob, I. I almost voted no again, but I didn't want to. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks to everybody from the public, too, for coming out. Bye, all. Take care.
Stay safe.